Let's call the meeting in order.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Pam, if you would please call a roll, noting that Juan is excused for absence.
Ara, yeah.
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
President?
Michelle?
President?
Kio?
Here.
Alex?
Present?
Here.
Absent at the moment, anyway. Right. Item C on the agenda this evening is approval of the meeting minutes from our March fourteenth meeting.
I'm going to approve them in a minute.
Moved by Griffin, thank you.
I second.
Sacrifice and on, thank you. Ms. Griffin, any comments?
I have one, I know on the top of each three other communications I want. There's just a couple of repetitive, so it says the date of the date of the Chamber of Commerce. So just get rid of one of those dates of those and then probably add meeting after commerce. So, so it reads the same number of Chamber of Commerce meetings as change.
Perfect. Okay, so now. Any other council members have anything on the meetings? Hey. Ms. Pam, if you would call the vote to approve the minutes?
Michelle's?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ara?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Meeting minutes approved, thank you. We have no prearranged participation this evening. So down to item E, approval of the agenda. A motion to approve.
I approve the agenda presented.
Moved by Fisher, thank you. I'll support that. Seconded by Cousins, thanks all. Discussion on the agenda. Seeing none, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Ara?
Yes.
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you very much. You have an agenda. Are there any declarations of conference interest this evening? That, okay?
Uh, go on, April, my employer is one of the folks receiving money for work. I don't get it, but it is my employer, so I'm gonna stay.
Okay. Anyone else? They're good. We'll move on to page two of the agenda. We have no public hearings this evening. They're down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? None in the audience online? It's like we've got just the host, Marie and Mr. Smith. Anything to add? Nothing at this time, I don't think.
I'm good.
Thanks, Marie. Okay, communications. We have our upcoming meeting list in the packet on page nine. You can come up on the meeting calendar.
Yeah, it notes the fourth line down, the zoning ordinance update subcommittee, but I think, I don't think we're meeting anymore. We're just doing the joint meeting, which will follow with that. That's sick on this, right? Are we doing? We're done.
Okay. Good catch.
And then. Oh, and for our meeting on the sixth, so that's the signature.
Correct.
And is that open or closed?
We'll start it open and then he can request to go into closed session.
And then. Should we talk about?
So it's abbreviated agenda, it's really to open the meeting.
As I.
Decide what is good, yeah.
Uh, for our tentative, I'm guessing tentative work session on the ninth is about the fire station. So I went back to the due to bonus, only three responses, so I don't know. Now would be the time to confirm that that's when that's happening with everybody who's here. I'm available that day.
Yeah, I responded that I was available back four days. We'll work towards that data, that's.
Okay.
Whoever has the most people. Okay. Anyone else have questions on the meeting calendar? Okay, we'll move down to our first report this evening. Welcome, Tim.
How are you?
Real good. You?
I'm good, all right. Thank you. How's everybody else?
Good.
So I was just to report some questions to do with me.
Did you guys have to clean up that beer this morning?
Actually, which one did that?
Dinner?
It was.
Thanks.
Right at the, I don't think he, probably said too much, but it was right on the texture and I were over at the.
Of course.
Right there.
Yeah. I wear my.
Pretty messy.
That's what I heard, one of the girls, well.
It must have been.
She came in, she went through a bunch of glass, so I guess it's spent. Big mess.
Okay.
I didn't see myself.
Um, I have a.
Go ahead, please.
Well, are, yeah. What does decanting mean? I mean, I know I can decant wine just fine. What does it mean to you guys?
So our digester.
Yeah.
It gets where the sludge comes down.
Yeah.
And it goes down and puts what they call super name. And we had to take that and decant that to the back of the plant, so it goes back until you recycle again.
Okay, okay. All right, glad I asked. Cause I certainly wouldn't have figured it out on my own.
I didn't know about it until I started working.
Yeah.
I thought that'd be cute. So, yeah, so we got a phone call, because it's a Friday, it was two thirty. And there was water leak inside the dirt clean. And so we went over there to take, you know, look at what's going on. We wanted to shut the water off and shut it completely off. So unfortunately, we had called emergency services and. I was gonna set up for Saturday because I was trying to find anybody again Friday afternoon. And get in there by that night, it's almost practically impossible. And as I was talking to Mike from the dirt clean. He, he, he let me know that it was unacceptable, that it was gonna happen to Saturday and explain it. I said, first of all, we're on a phone, explain this worst case scenario, this is what we can do to get you through the night. I said, but hold your thought, because I remembered a gentleman that was working down the road on Baker Street a couple weeks before that, with the leak over there. And so I was a master plumber and he did really nice work and I looked at that because we're trying to find people, because I'm having a real hard time finding people. And I just happened to win, get him a call and he was able to do it. And took a little bit longer, we had to be hand dug, because there was everything in gas creation, that's like gas, electric, irrigation. So, but he wrapped it up and he did a really good job. And Michael's true man. I get done for today. He's my best friend. So.
That's doing so.
Well, that.
I say best ones up, good for you.
Yeah, no, no, that's, it's, every time you can get compliments, I mean, that's.
Good. I saw the concrete missing.
Yeah. We're gonna, I talked to Kurt today, he's got some projects coming up. So I told him, I said, well, if you got some projects, just let me know, I'll take the backup there and I'll go, I'll pour back myself, that's, that's not a problem, that won't take long. It's one flag, so.
Any questions for Tim or Dan? Zach?
Interesting one for me is tried to tell a vice sewer at fire hall. It raises lots of interesting questions, like that five, five word short story that. Was a fulgured back in the day, but. What was the need and was it successful?
So they've had the backups, I don't know what you guys have known, but they've had backups recently in the fire hall. So we took a camera up there and came back coming from the fire hall to the sewer leak itself. And there's a spot where we couldn't get the camera through. So we reversed that and went the other way and there's another spot we're having a hard time with to get through. So right now Eric's looking into a solution to take care of that problem, whether it's replacement. But because of the hill, it's gonna be a little bit of. Trickier than what it would be if it's just a regular open cut. So there is a process, what they call pipe bursting. I don't know if your dads are familiar with that. And what they do is they, they, they stick something up the line, goes up the line to the other side. And then they, it's, it's hard to explain it. It's like a, I always call it like a bullet. And what it does is it goes through and it breaks apart the other line, brings it in our line, right through it, so there won't be. Well, you're gonna have digging on either side, but you could still go through and get the seal and it won't be the joints and stuff like that.
Is it, is it crushed pipe or belly or roots or just, you can't even see?
You can't see, it's underwater, so that's the problem.
So there's probably some belly.
Yeah, belly, um, I mean, we, we're outside with the, you know, it's close to that wall and all that, so that might play factors too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Everybody keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next up is our community development manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, how is council?
Good.
All right, everybody's doing well. Excellent. Okay, so you have my report in front of you and. Please let me know if you've got any questions or comments that I can address for you.
Questions from Jill?
I want to supplement, so thanks.
Yep.
You guys also for a few minutes, finding answers to the questions, thank you.
The, um. If you don't have any other things, I guess I'll just sit down.
You're good? All right, fair enough. We are all the way down to city manager report, I believe.
Yeah, so we had a couple of updates in the supplement. The community survey is live. I think Josh checked it just before twenty-four. People who have taken surveys, it's up from fourteen, just a couple hours ago. So we're, we're getting it out there. We're gonna put out an email, update, Facebook, everything tomorrow, not the folks that received the postcard. Trying to, to time it all, so it kind of all goes out at once. We got notice that there's gonna be some fireworks around July fourth, surprise. And as part of Dexter Days in August. Zach, you had asked about our contract with the Washington County Sheriff. And we're able to find the contract page that preferences the substation. And so it looks like there is some requirement in writing a substation for, for them. There are answers to a couple of questions on the supplement. We just had our first, second interview with an administrative assistant candidate today. We have another one tomorrow and hopefully we'll be able to make an offer by the end of the week. Which will fill the last position that has been vacant in the office, so. We'll be back to full strength for a while, hopefully at least. So. Does anybody have any questions?
How's your shoulder?
It's doing okay. I, it's hard to tell the difference day to day, but I look back, you know, three weeks ago and I can tell that it, it is getting better. You know, still icing it every day. I just started physical therapy last week and so doing, I'm doing exercises twice a day to try and get the, the range of motion back.
Good.
But the physical therapist said that for the first couple of weeks, I'm gonna be like, why, why am I even doing this? But then after either week four or week six, she said that it'd be much better gains than inflexibility, so.
Good.
It's good. Glad to hear.
Thank you.
We're getting a lot of attention from over here, we're going to add it, so. We get it.
Yeah, so I took a look at the, I took from the substation thing, I don't know if this is something to discuss now, but my read of it is that. You know, the highlighted part, the sheriff will consult with the village to determine where any substation may be located. Which to me, my read is, you know, you might have a substation. But that if there is one, the parties agree that the village shall provide and maintain any such substation. So I don't know if anybody else reads that as. You would probably would work with them to figure out if it's needed and if it is, we provide it. I'm not saying at this point I feel strongly that we don't have one, but. I just wanna bring that to people's attention, that up to my read of it is that I think it is an open question. Whether or not we have one, we would work with them to figure that out and if they want us to have one, then we. We provide.
Yeah, I was gonna ask to have council review that, because any such. Is very different than shall provide a substation. I'm not suggesting that we get rid of it, but if we're providing a facility that's subsidized and water township and Dexter townships. Sheriff things, we ought to discuss it plus that if you were to do improvements, that's a million dollar question. You know, if we just do it for the two cruisers that we've got, that's much different than eight cruisers. I, I'd like to hear councils. Not this council, but council, SEO, sure.
Yeah, I can, like, talk to Scott about it.
Can you just email out the whole agreement?
Yeah.
Please. Thank you.
Anything sometime in April, Lieutenant, or?
Yeah, I, I asked him if he'd be able to come to the April one meeting, and he said that.
Other questions for Justin? We're making record time. We, we. Follow, follow the rules. The basketball game is on. Yep. Okay, I'll move down to my report. I want to tell you that we had a very, what I thought was good interview with. Such a candidate for fire chief Doug Armstrong. About an hour and forty minutes and. Yeah, he voted after that for first discussion to allow the succession committee to enter into negotiations for contract with Doug, so.
Nice.
That is the next step. That doesn't mean that. We'll reach a contract agreement, but I'm, you know, optimistic about that. He's a really good candidate. He showed a lot of strengths in a lot of good areas and. Anyway, just let me see, saw that note in my report.
What is the potential transition date?
So we, we kicked that around as a board, the thought would be that if, if we could bring back a draft. Contract at our April twenty-one meeting. For approval that he's probably gonna need to give in a couple, three, four weeks or whatever's noticed to SIO. And then maybe he could work in tandem with the chief for a period of a month or two. June and July, something like that. And it might be that it's full time. June and then half days in July, depending on how long the transition is going.
The chief's not done yet.
He would be done after that, in the July, or mid-July, it could be early, it depends on how well they, they do the first month together. Something like that, too.
Okay.
Obviously, if the, the DAFD doesn't, you know, want to prove the contract right away, then that extends it out a little bit further. The chief has said he's willing to, you know, help us out whenever time needs to, to make the transition effective, so. Do we still have the waste management meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so it's coming up. You haven't talked to them since then, right?
Not, not, not about the contract, just.
Okay.
Oh, service stuff.
All right, and newsletter timing?
Uh, we're, we have a, we have a draft, I think. So we can share that draft with council. And then typically it takes about a week, once we send it over to the printer. For it to get printed and then a couple of days thereafter to indoors.
Okay, and then we're still thinking the. The next one I could do this day to the city?
In the, the summer one.
Whatever, is it, is that May or June or what was it? I just wanted to know what I'm.
I, it would probably be June.
Okay, all right. And then what is the update on building permits for here?
Uh, I think we're still waiting on building permit. I, I believe that Stephen has had conversations with building department.
Okay.
Um, and so he's, he's prodding them. But. I, I think he's, he's thinking still another, maybe another week.
Gotcha. I noticed there was a little bit of tape on the ground.
Yeah, so, so, so we had, we had a.
Did you want to explain that just to?
Yeah, so, so, so we, we had a, a project update meeting with our contractor. And one of the items that, that I, I asked for, and actually, so thank you for bringing that up, so I wanted to. Mention that this is for my, my update was, I asked them to put on the floor, uh, tape where the replacement beams would have to be placed. And, yeah, there, there should be one on that side and one on the side, um, in order to replace the center beam.
I like it.
And I think that on there, uh, it says how high, um, the horizontal beam would have to go, uh, to make that connection. Or to support the, um, the, the big joist up there. I, I'd ask them to put some tape on, on this column here, kind of where, where that. Where that level would be, but it looks like it's not, it's not on there.
Okay. Thank you for doing that, yeah.
But there, there is gonna be some, some kind of impact. Um, as far as scrunching here in order to, to get rid of this. There's gonna be a little bit of a frame for the council, the dais.
So my last topic of update. I got contacted by Tom Culver. And if you know Tom, he's a former DDA member, lives over on Edison Street, city resident. Tom represents the new property owners at the Sloan Kingsley property. And Tom reached out by email and asked if I would meet with him and the new owner, which is again named Dave Lutton.
Oh, yeah.
Dave, Lutton, Lutton?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, Dave.
Yeah.
So I, I spoke with Michelle and you noticed in her report, there was a comment previously about her being contacted as well. I've read, I haven't set a meeting date with them, although I told them I would, I would meet. And it was your turn now, anybody for a meeting, but. Uh, I did contact or leave a message for Will Hathaway, the SIO Township Supervisor. Today. I wanna find out what they're doing before I sit down and talk to them, so. I'll fill you in and I'll let you guys know when I have that meeting set to see where. I don't know what I assume that the new property owner wants to, you know, understand or rehash and stuff, but. Wanted to make you aware of that, so I didn't get that in my report because it didn't happen until after this was issued on June, so. Has anybody else been contacted?
Most likely.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, I'll make sure to make, provide an update. Where they reached out. I guess there's two property owners, Dave Lutton and somebody else, I don't know who that's named. Yes.
Nice question about the barriers.
Oh, yeah.
So it says there may be some potential cost recovery decisions made to users, so. And I'm looking at the update here, so DDA has stated that.
Yes.
Is there a plan for businesses to share in the cost of all, or where?
If you remember in our ordinance that we adopted.
Yeah.
We put the cost burden when they requested back on them.
Okay.
But the thought was that instead of having. Instead of having a non-uniform set of barriers. We would get some and then if, I don't know if there's a decision by. I don't know if we're waiving the fee or, you know, continuing this, or afford our victim charge, but in theory, we could charge a very nominal fee back. You know, less than if they had to run them and over time we could reduce some of the cost.
Right.
So it's just an idea, just, I mean, we haven't set a policy, the ordinance might have been charged, it's supposed to charge that.
Right. It should be the fee for using. So DDA can have, so DDA approves its own expenditures, right? That, that doesn't, is there any point where those have to come back to us?
Um, well, well, we, we do approve the DDA, I mean, we do bless the DDA budget, I think, don't we?
Yeah.
I mean, by law, we do.
Or, or if there's.
But this is the thought, the thought was, I mean, we've, we've been in this quasi, I mean, we're, we're hopefully leaving the pandemic.
Right.
But we've been in a state, the joint estate where we've rented the barricades two years in a row. It's a very popular thing, you know, the businesses are gonna request it. The thought was is that if we get the barricades, you know, DTW could use them for other things if they had to. We do have a place to store them. You know, now that we didn't have, you know, previously that was one of the concerns about getting them two years ago. Um, so we just thought it was a more cost-effective move and. You know, if she finds a way to.
Would they rent them?
They could rent them back, yeah.
So then you have.
They could.
Farm barrier?
Well, or we can waive the fee again for a year if we do that. It's, that makes it easy too, but we just thought instead of paying for them, almost the same amount, might as well have them.
Right, the cost, yeah, I guess I'm saying for what it's worth, I would rather they share the cost in some way, I guess I. You guys might have more information in front of you to figure out what time, the time, the one that makes sense, but. Given that it's only a couple of businesses that are able to use them, I'd like to see them share the cost of it.
Yeah, you're welcome. I just wanted everybody to know that we're getting them, so. And we got origin white, all we have to do is change our city colors to match. Good.
Oregon pop banners.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And kind of like speeds.
We, we had asked if there were other colors available.
So they don't do a special.
Yeah.
Okay, I won't drag this out any longer, that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Okay, we are over to, well, are there any council member reports? Yes.
I just mentioned something briefly that I didn't think to, until I saw in your report, that Howard can open accounts.
Oh, yeah.
I was able to attend that, so I've attended that, it was nice, I attended with a few, few people from the Chamber, Dexter Forum.
I got there, yeah.
And they have a ton of food.
Yeah. They're still out there when I got there.
Oh, did you make?
Yeah, I just made it, I just.
There's a ton of. Yeah, I left.
That rainstorm really slowed me down.
And we left a little bit after Jamie, so.
Good, good, I'm glad we represented that, thank you for doing that. Sorry, I believe, I think Jeff Bell said they could fit thirty-six agents in there if they had to. It's a lot.
There's more than half, well, instead.
Yeah, yeah.
They're really lucky. Best in the actual states.
Right. Yeah, sure is. Okay, interesting to mention that. Down to the consent agenda, where there are four items, please.
I moved, we approved the four items listed on the consent agenda, bills and payroll, the amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. The United Methodist Church road closure for April sixteen. The Anniver, or the Dexter and Anniver Run road closure for June fifth and the DTW trailer purchase. In amount not to exceed six thousand, three hundred and nine dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, is there a second? Or, my cousins? Pam, if you would please call the vote to approve the four items on the consent agenda.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Stay.
Griffin?
Yes.
Ara?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you, five zero. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we're down to new business item M one. Consideration of adding, excuse me, of awarding additional stormwater work on Second Street to Concord Excavating in an amount not to exceed forty thousand. I could get a motion.
My cap motion.
Moved by Fisher.
Nice.
Sacrifice and thank you. Okay, that's.
Yeah, so, um, as we're doing our, our due diligence. Post-design reconstruction meetings with contractor, um, we found a couple of potential issues that we wanted to. Address before construction actually happened on the project. Dan, I don't know if you, if you wanna.
During the walk through, Mr. Robertson's, he may swear that there was a storm like outlets just off of, uh, one of the ways you call it, the car wash. Um, and that comes from across the street, carrying water down Second Street. And, uh, somewhere along the line, it kind of got to the wayside a little bit. When we went back through the plane, we noticed that had been picked up. And it was enough water, created a little bit of problem for the car wash, but when we go through there and we get that new storm and we put the pipe back. I'm worried it was gonna get a lot more water. Um, so we're sorry that we didn't pick it up right away, but getting that connected down to Central Street, it would be a, a huge bonus for us. And we, we don't wanna make a, a stormwater problem worse, you know, from what we're doing on Second Street. And throughout the years, I don't know how many council members are aware or not of the projects that we've been doing for, say, the last ten years. We've been doing a wonderful job on road projects, but we always put these ditches in and I know Paul's head. The deal was, I know showing to myself as, so what if I talk to Justin, we drove around town and I showed him. And I think that if we could just, uh, do a little better job on what the ditches look like. You know, and make them more mowable. for residents if we have to put them in, would be a really good idea. So I met with Justin, I talked to him about having a meeting with Marcus, Chris Donakowski from OHM along with Tim. And I think that if we a little bit more creative in design, and then also when we do these road projects, we look at what the finished product looks like and say, would we want to and try to try to do things a little bit differently. And when I drove around with Marcus and Chris and Tim, I went back over ten years of projects we had, and if we had just added ten more feet of pipe and daylighted it out a little bit later, if we have to put the ditches in or the swales in, it would have made it a lot easier for the residents. Over the past ten years, we've had to go back and fill in ditches after projects. And sometimes that can be a little painful for residents and it doesn't really represent what we're trying to do, I mean, because these projects are wonderful and it's made a huge difference on what we're doing for the roadways. So a couple of my suggestions were to the team, you know, like on Second Street, we're talking about putting curb and gutter. So why wouldn't we put any swales and ditches in? If we're gonna do that. If you look at the reconstruct that we did on Grand Street, we we enclosed all the ditches and we pushed them away and it was wonderful. But if we do, Justin came up with an idea that maybe we ought to just have a standard on, you know, how many feet wide the ditch is gonna be, what is what is gonna make it mobile in case we do have so there's a couple of things, if we're gonna end up with curb and gutter, why aren't we filling the ditches then? Now, because if we're gonna come back later to reconstruct it, it's gotta be cheaper to do it now with this. If we do have to put ditches in, let's make sure that they're mobile for a rest. Let's not go back six months later. Right, because a lot of headaches and it kind of takes away from what we're trying to do. So that being said, as you can see on your pickup, the car wash water, it's eighteen thousand, but to enclose that one ditch that's associated with that, that that boosts it up to forty. If we are gonna curb and gutter Second Street, I think it's a good investment to do both.
Yeah, and and to kind of build up what David was saying, we have some updates that will happen at some point to the engineering standards. And so maybe the, you know, rise and run of slopes might fit nicely up in there.
And we've ran into situations too that the downstream couldn't handle putting pipes, you know, we needed the swales to absorb. So there's a lot of different things that goes into the decisions that we make, but I think we just need to be a little bit clearer as we go.
So Dan, how how much of Second Street drains towards Central ultimately?
From Edison, Edison all the way down.
So is the is the twelve inches big enough size for when we curb and gutter it?
Yes. And and the pipe on Central Street is is enough. Section eighteen, where it ties into close.
So and actually, we're planning, Justin and Tim and myself, we're trying to plan through this design project that we catch this a little bit quicker.
So is the idea then when we when we curb and gutter a second, you know, just run catch basins to that line?
Yes.
Right, we can use, and in some cases, we might need to tie in some kind of little drains anyway, right? We we know we got enough water coming off the property, we can't make it over the curb, we can put in some little basins, we're doing it in the future. But there's two ways you can do it, right? You can lay right underneath the curb, right? Or if you got enough room, what we do is our big business way out there.
And the other challenge with with that section of from what my biz, you you could make the ditch mobile, you could add space, but in order to do that, you'd probably end up with the sidewalk, you know, five feet off of off of the house.
Yeah.
I mean, council, if you guys got any other suggestions.
No, I'm supportive of it. I just was hoping that it was sized right and we could, you know, make use of it when eventually you can kind of see that where the curb line is supposed to go, right on the stride.
Right.
So I can picture a catch basin out there that ties in. Where does the storm want to go, let's? No, 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 the other side of Edison, does it go down second or dump?
Yeah, it goes down towards First Street Park.
Okay.
That's a twenty four inch.
That's what it's gonna be. Twenty four now.
Okay, so that part it would go that.
That part goes around. Edison to South.
Two blocks, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Dan?
Thank you for staff for catching this. I do want to say that I am upset that we paid a lot of money to have design with our cost issues, either with flooding at the car wash, which there would have been liability on because you can't take actions that increase the flow of water on a property. So it will really expense a fix afterwards. Or we create property that people can't maintain without risking their rents. Again, thank you to staff, I'm very disappointed that it it took to this far. Topography hasn't changed. As far as I know, we haven't been sprouting or growing one in there. And I do want to again say that I would prefer not curb and gutter the entire line, only where it's absolutely necessary to manage water due to topography. For those who are not familiar, sheet flow with direct infiltration reduces the outflow and the size of structure and all those things. So that's all.
I I have one other question, will the sidewalk be impacted by the manhole covers or will the sidewalk be south of the manhole? It looks like the purple circles and the red circles.
Yeah, those are exandri just to stick.
Just to stick out, okay, so the sidewalk. Okay, I was gonna say, otherwise, I mean, you'd have to shift the sidewalk.
Impossible to keep the structure.
Okay, well, I mean, if not move the sidewalk, right, we got we got the right of way there, right? Okay, I don't want to have to ride a bicycle or walk over manhole cover.
So by the looks of this, I'm sorry, just familiarizing myself with the drawing, that right of way line, we are putting the sidewalk much closer to the street than we could go much closer to their house and we're not, so that's my preference, so I'm happy to see that. Because I know in that area, people are worried about the sidewalk, like you said, being right up to the house.
The house is only a show, it's a long ways away. Okay, any other conversation or discussion? Dan, please call a vote to approve the additional stormwater work on Second Street to Concord Excavating, the amount of, not to see forty thousand.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Ah Rob?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. New business, I am M one, discussion of a transfer of property to downtown development, sorry. Justin, do you want to lead us?
I'll hold Michelle lead.
Okay.
So if you're starting to talk about this at a work session and then again robustly last month, there were some things you wanted staff to be able to bring you back as far as information. So we have some definitive information, City Council did purchase the property on May ninth, twenty eleven. That's when the village, I put down City Council, it's just a village council authorized the purchase of the property at eighty seventy seven. And that was for fifty six thousand five hundred, but later on that same year, August eighth, twenty eleven, Village Council again authorized the purchase of property. This time it was for eighty seven, for for the eighty five thousand dollars. In in these purchases were made on behalf of the DDA, excuse me, and it was to facilitate the future mixed use project that is what we ultimately call thirty five, thirty forty five Broad Street. And it was done with the understanding that the DDA would take that and that. The city treasurer has been from the DDA and began repaying the city for the two fourth street properties starting in fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And that was done in increments of twenty thousand dollars. The DDA continued to make those payments until twenty fiscal year twenty twenty one. When they made a final, then they made a final payment, actually I think it was the final two payments of forty four thousand. Years, the remaining amount or the repaid amount was a hundred and sixty four thousand, which included the purchase price of both of the properties plus an additional twenty two thousand five hundred dollars, which those were costs that the city incurred both through administration and from demolition of the two properties. To where I got all this information was through village manager reports, approved council minutes, again, and then the housing and repayment reports and budget reports that the city manager or city treasurer ran. As you know, the transfer of properties after the repayment was done wasn't complete. And as a result, the city is now not able to to make that transfer without going to a voted people. And the DDA has discussed having ballot language or language put on the ballot that would allow them to be able to ask the question about the sale or have that question about the sale put to them. And that's basically what we talked about at your last meeting. In addition, there was also discussion about eighty ninety Grand Street, that's the little gravel portion that's next to Orretta Gales, basically. That property is not owned by the city, or no, I'm sorry, by the DDA, it is owned by the city. There was not, at the time it was purchased, and that was done because of Washington County tax foreclosure. It wasn't discussed as a potential piece of the thirty forty five Broad Street property, although when we went out for our first RFP in twenty sixteen, it was bundled with all the other properties, so. It it the DDA would just were was interested in getting feedback from council if they wanted to purchase it, we're not saying that they're not at this moment, but if they wanted to, would the DDA or would the city council consider a sale to them? In which case, extrapolating from that, they would then go up to those people. That may not be this year, obviously. And they also recognize that it may not be needed, it may not be need to be the sale to the DDA in order to keep it part of the thirty forty five Broad Street redevelopment project area. It may not ever have a building on it, it may always be a parking lot. It doesn't mean that it's going to always be gravel. The, if you recall, the the concept that has broad community consensus. Broad Street was realigned slightly, it stayed a street, but it got realigned and actually took up that piece and became a part of the public road, which gave a little bit more space or a portion of existing Broad Street to the redevelopment area. It's just moving things around keeps the Broad Street, which is what everybody wants to do is keep it as a public road. But the ability to move it around the most for that is where we are tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions or comments. Looking forward to hearing what you got to say, so I can make it that two weeks.
Dan?
So you had mentioned for the second piece, the eighty ninety grand, that it wouldn't necessarily have to be sold to the DDA or transferred to the DTA for it to be part of the the DDA to be part of the thirty forty five. So these last two, I understand that was the original agreement. Suppose it doesn't, you know, if it goes to a void, it doesn't pass, is there some? What does it look like if that stays in the city? But still becomes part of, wants to be part of the thirty forty five Broad, the first two properties that are listed, is there, does that completely, it sounds like it wouldn't preclude them from from it from being part of it, or do you know what, so that looks like?
But so what are you talking about?
So so the first two, so she had mentioned with the third property, eighty ninety grand, it wouldn't necessarily have to be transferred to the DDA to be part of thirty forty five Broad. So if that would necessarily have to be transferred, suppose we didn't have this agreement that we were originally going to transfer the first two properties to the DDA? If we didn't, for whatever reason, transfer them to the DDA, does that complicate their ability to be part of a combined development? With the property that is part of the DDA, or like, what are those complications, I guess, I'm just curious?
So I thought that you were asking me if it goes to a voted people, people decline it.
Yeah.
Can it still be part of thirty forty five Broad? Yes. Or if the question was, what if the city doesn't want solid right now, can it still be part? The answer to that again is yes, but it complicates it. Because the amount of time and money that a developer has to put into or is going to put into this process to not know at the end of the night that they're going to be, that they have, that they're going to actually be able to own that property is a huge risk and developers are risk averse. It it's just effectively. If the, if the.
Well, another part of what we passed, limits our ability to lease it for longer than three years or something, right? So I mean, nobody's gonna put a building on there, only the three year lease guarantee. You'd have to redo it every three years or two point nine, you know, years, right? So if if so, if whether whether if it doesn't, if the voters don't approve it, transfer to transfer it from the city to DDA, in theory, there could be another ballot initiative that would ask if they want to sell it to whoever the thirty forty five Broad folks are. But there's still a hurdle out there, and it's still, it's a hurdle. The 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 idea of putting it in the DDA's hands or getting in the DDA's hands would be that, at least for that L is all the DDA and that is less of a.
And there's no scenario, I guess I haven't seen that, you know, what the original plans, you know, predevelopment plans were. There's no scenario where what currently a city property stays a new property for some public use as part of the thirty forty five Broad? Were there any like public use spaces as part of the thirty forty five development? So where that would allow it to like be cohesive, but this property is still owned by the city for some public use, that was never.
No, the 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 integration of public private space. As part of the layout and design of a project, that interaction of public private spaces is established. So the only public space that we know stays ownership by the city is Broad Street. But it's it's location can shift north or east or west slightly, depending on how the other pieces are designed and layout for development.
Yep.
The the other piece that, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, you know, since the city has already been paid for the grant or and they've been reimbursed from the DDA for those properties, if the city were to retain it for whatever purpose, we would get to pay the DTA back.
Like, yeah, I don't see a problem in putting it to a vote with those first two, something like Sean, you had some comments on the third property, it's better, the last time we discussed, it's whether we need to do that now.
Yeah, I'm I'm fully supportive of putting the language that's right there on the top of, bottom of page sixty five out there, I think that's the right thing to do, and I think, you know, this not only gives a good story of behind what, you know, the reason of the follow through. Eighty ninety grand, I frankly think we should hold on to that for now. I think we need trailhead parking, I haven't seen the plan that shows, I'll put that in place, and I think that's priority, should be a priority for us down there between between the Grand Street right away and then where Broad and that little property is, I think that could be parking, and good parking. And that little property is, I think that could be parking, and good parking. Even, even if you're in the short term.
Yeah, Mr. Trump, that park never included in the thirty forty-five Broad.
Well, we've always, we've always offered, well, originally we offered grand as an expanded opportunity to create, you know, the connection. And I think some of those visions did show some type of parking, but it never was really, I don't think it ever got to be.
Didn't get to a real defined street state, if you will, between Broad and where the park. Where Grand Street meets the park.
We've created such a use and such a destination that, you know, the parking that we have is, is open and, and it's easy to. Get a vehicle in there, but it's not, you know, ADA compliant, it's not level, and it's.
So that gravel parking, that, that would become, that's part of thirty forty-five Broad right now?
Well, it's what we talk about as part of thirty forty-five Broad, yeah. That, that whole bounded by Grand Forest on either side of Broad. Because we had, we being the city slash DDA had control of it, we talked about, we offered it up the first couple times. And, you know, the, I mean, the other, the other side was. Damon is, I mean, frankly, if I was going to own property. Or there was a city and make it a public space. I wouldn't want it on. Part of the eighty ninety side of Grant, I'd rather have it next to the park. I mean, if I was going to make it a public space, I'd be getting a continuation of our park. If that was the direction, but I, I can get my arms around trailhead parking on Grand and additional parking between. Down there, I was going and Broad, and if the other L works its way into this project, that could be fine. Broad Street really doesn't need to move. Broad Street moving. Adds other costs like relocating the power lines and all sorts of things that make, that just make the project, I'm not saying it can't be done. But it makes it more expensive when they're trying to find a way to deal with other costs. There's no perfect answer to this, but I, I think that's the right thing to do is put that on the ballot.
Zach?
All right, this conversation popped down, so I'll jump in now. My concern would be if we don't have a clear plan, it's a lot easier for people to say no. Because they see it as a opportunity or desire to see it around. The, the charter amendment, like, okay, we're not going to have it, we're just going to give it to the DDA. Personally, I do have concern without any identified plan that the DDA could sell it, get a one-story building. Then the city has lost. Our abilities to leverage it. I do understand and appreciate and acknowledge that the developers don't want to take the risk of not knowing what's going to happen. I think it is important for all properties to be bundled because the, the side away from the park. Can be easier to develop, especially with two parcels next to each other. I do think moving Broad makes it easier because you increase the size of the area on the other side of the new projects. I'm not interested in surface parking that area at all. It's inconsistent with our master plan or DDA plan. Trailhead parking, we've got plans. But professional parking along Grand from the cemetery all the way up and down the street there. I'd rather have that surface parking. If we don't get it to the DDA, do. Agree that we have to reverse them. Or we hate us for something that we didn't give them. I do think it, it makes more sense to. Relocate Broad. Now, if, if that parcel isn't part of it, it's a weird little sliver there. Could relocate Broad onto it still, but when the existing Broad right away. Is vacated, it goes half with that property and half with the other property. So it would limit the developable area and limit the feasibility of project on that side. Well, I don't know, it's, I, I'd rather get it on the ballot when it has a high chance of success. Because if it's not successful the first time, it's much harder the second and the third and the fourth time, because people have a solid taste.
Are you talking about all three properties or just the?
Any of it. And, and so, you know, folks, folks are concerned that. They, they want to have a say in the disposition of property, and it's just kind of blindly. Even though there's good cause for it, with, without a plan, it's easier for me to imagine folks just voting no. Because they're not sure what could happen.
Nobody's been overly concerned about what's going to happen with that property in ten years. But nobody's been overly concerned about what's going to happen. I mean, it's all been part of their support for redevelopment. For me agrees.
Yeah. Do you think if the council is united on this and does a. I was thinking, I was thinking, the only words I can come up with is cheer. But yeah, I think you know what I mean.
Yes.
Charm, that's it, that's it. For lack of a better term. If the council is united on it and is, is out there actively promoting it to the constituency. Do you think it would still be?
My concerns would be, we have to be very careful about how we use public treasure for ballot initiatives. We can't put a poster out that says, oh, yes, the city might. Also, my recollection is last city council adopted a resolution opposing the charter amendment and it passed, so I don't know.
So I would like to have something, I guess, in November about the charter amendment. So we have a question in the survey, I think. That's asking people for clarity and, and their thoughts on that. And so I wonder if we decide to put something on November about just the charter amendment itself, restricting it to. Real property only or real property over a certain dollar value, and, and then if we also have real property on. About at the same time, I don't know if that's confusing. I, I guess I'm just thinking about if we end up having two questions on there. One about, are we keeping the charter amendment or modifying it, and two.
This could go in August. They don't have to go at the same time.
Right. So in August, do we have to, would August be a special election for us or no?
August is the general primary.
I mean, which do you think should go first? We split them?
That's a good question. Well, I think one, you could argue, one is that you put, you put this specific property on there first. Because you say, okay, this is a nod to the fact that this is what you said you wanted, so we're, we're putting this to you. And then, I guess you could look at the outcome. I don't know how the deadlines play out in terms of when would we see the results of August before we'd have to submit for November? I would think we would see the results, well, yeah, you'd have to see the results of August before November.
But would we not even consider putting something out there to amend that, amend the problem for the future?
Yeah, I guess you could see, yeah, I guess I could.
Might be, might be a way to.
Yeah, you could put. Yeah, put the lane in August and then just make a decision.
Well, I mean, I also don't, I don't think people see the DDA as an enemy.
Oh, I don't mean.
I mean, they're a community partner.
Yep, I agree.
Maybe I'm.
You're not.
Just judging that, I don't think so.
No, you're not.
I think it's an entirely different story. You're putting it out there to. A non-public entity without a plan, but in this case, we're just. Fishing off something that was started eight years ago. I think it's worth a try in August.
Is the DDA able to do anything as far as talking about what their plans are, reminding the public of things they've done in the past about the property to say? I, I mean, I appreciate Tex's point that it's public funding, we're not supposed to be saying yay or nay or however, using public funds to do it. I don't know if people are going to see this to Zach's point, well, what's going to happen there? So is there?
We do still want our, want our broadly, the consent system. All of the information still on the website. It's still what we promote. As the first action for any developers that wants to. And I, and I understand what Zach was saying as far as you can't use funds. But you can talk with your constituents when they ask questions. And, and when you're talking to them, you can let them know. Why you're for it, and these are the reasons. That helps, that just helps give them confidence in, in, in the decision. Confidence in making the decision.
And, and we can also put out statements. Truthful factual statements. What happens if you vote yes, and what, or what happens if this passes, and what happens if this fails? But there, there is very tight-knit thing. The city is speaking on behalf of the ballot.
Just like you do when you go out for a move, that you want, you want to be able to have people supported. But you can't. Like you said, you can't, can't design radio ads for it. You can't think of those stuff.
So is there any other information that we need staff to find for us on this? Right back on, or, please, this is Ron here to show you that this three of note got weird.
I appreciate it all, the documentation. I'm sure that took some time to put together, so thanks for doing that.
Okay, well, everybody think it over, we'll update the DDA and then just maybe come back to us. One more time just to see if, maybe the end of April, because that's when we have to decide if we're going to get it on the August ballot.
Yeah, for, for the August ballot, you would have to have something adopted before May.
Right.
I think this is what's been meant to throw in there at the same time.
Different question. Sure Dan could find something, some little barrels.
I, I think.
Let's try and be respectful. Okay, new business item, M three, consideration of polling location changes for precincts one. Sorry, polling location change. I support, moved by Fisher, second by Cousins. Any council questions or discussion?
Back in the day was, when I was on the election commission, we had. Tried to see what the tiers about using their clubhouse as a polling location. Have we done that as part of this?
The, the, the seeders turned us down when, when we had asked them. I don't think anything is.
Okay, so we have reengaged.
We wouldn't even need them now, though. We have our own space.
My concern is there are like nineteen, twenty people in here. Look at the parking.
You don't.
That's.
There's parking now along the back though, which would be kind of like they have the park at senior center. That was down and back, and then you hiked it up the hill. That's kind of what this looks like. I don't know.
How many election workers do we have in two precincts?
It would be about ten. City staff. I, yeah, yeah, we, we, well, we, we wouldn't be in here for August, but we'd likely be in here for November. So probably seven.
Would you open this door and mark this precinct one and mark, open this end, this end of the building?
It's possible. We, we could also use. We can definitely use this potentially for two or. Towards the far side of the building as, as well. I, I haven't, I haven't considered what the flow would look like, but I, I think there's enough space to fit three things in this moment.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Where does a work pool parking go? If we just want the street, like, street parking is allowed all the way.
To a purple.
And then you can't, there's no street parking.
Yeah, that's just my.
Okay, please call the vote.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Is sure?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Last new business item, thank you for waiting out there, is the consideration of millennium place. PUD final site plan and development agreement.
Okay.
Hold on, let's get a motion. Is there someone who wants to make a motion? One way or another to get it started.
I'll make the motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Both? Or just that point they planned, or one at a time or what?
Uh, one at a time.
So final site plan approval?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so seconds for that?
I'll support it.
My Fisher, second by Cousins. That's to approve the beauty final site plan. Okay, I understand. Okay, Joe?
Okay, so we can do, me giving you the rundown first, or we can have the applicant give you a small presentation on the project? Please let me know how you would like to start this.
So you have a big.
I can give you the lowdown, or you, the applicant can introduce to present what you need to. Present the project.
I'm happy to hear from the applicant.
Let me do it. Welcome.
I was going to get in some things.
Great.
And our team here, Kathy Kine, that's made it easy, Mary. Kevin Rosenberg, with the architect Jeff Scott. Marhafer, Marhafer Campbell back here, Jim Marhafer. And this is Charlie Kynan's swisher wheelchair. We're trying to, for you to ask for a final site plan approval. This project has been diced and dissected and gone through, and I think we're at this point where we're ready for the final, final site plan approval. I know I delivered many plans to the, to Michelle, to all the look-overs to review the project. I think it's pretty straightforward. Twenty-three. Multiple units in one building encompasses two lots, seventy, seventy-nine fifty-six and seventy-nine sixty Grand Street. On seventy-nine sixty is the current house that we own, and that will be demoed as part of the project. If you have any questions, it may. We've asked for any of our team back here, specifically Kathy or Jeff.
So we've got the final site plan in front of us, with comments from the engineers, the architects, the fire department, the planners, et cetera. And then there's a draft development agreement, which was the part that we broke off. Sounds like there's still a little bit of tweaking going on, is that Thursday? I didn't know whether those comforters can. You know, people are not, so. That's why I suggested that, it's the breakdown, but I mean. Do you have questions about the site plan? Let's start there. Okay.
Um, I'm just curious, as part of this, were you able to reach out to surrounding residents at any point, talk to them about their thoughts on the project? My understanding or a little bit of research I've done about these PUDs is that it's advisable to try to engage the community, at least the neighbors. I don't know if you ever spoke, if staff did, or anybody spoke, I mean, aside from a public hearings, which I know we've had. Was there an opportunity to get feedback from people in that surrounding area?
Yes, the developer as well as staff did have communications with some of the neighbors, not all. In addition to the public hearing. And one of the conversations that, that we had ultimately ended up is the developer providing the site called the tent. And that is the, the one property that he has is vacant, but it's next to a, a property that he has a residential home. And there are people that live in state, and it's in there. But there is a joint connection for sewer and water. And obviously, it's part of his development, that goes away. But what happens to this person over here? So he is fixing that fountain itself, but he's fixing it for that homeowner. And so instead of having this one joint connection that goes to the alley, it becomes a separated connection. And so instead of having this one joint connection that goes to the alley, it becomes a separated connection and it's a better connection coming off of Grand Street. So that's one, just one example.
The two houses that Frank, the vacant property we have, because it's which is uh seventy-nine fifty-six. There's that common. Way back when whoever developed this sewer and water for the neighbor's property that we don't own runs through our property. And the house that we own, the sewer runs and wise in. Again, I think that's a problem, right? So there's been some problem which this development goes through, those are going to be corrected. So right now, the house we own, our sewer goes through that vacant lot that we have, the water is connected directly to the uh. To the to the alley. So our plan is to. Work with the neighbor. We've talked to the neighbor, the neighbor was at the public area and go directly either back to the alley or to the street and get that off of us. I think that he may have some split backup problems because of this. Common joint. So that's that's going to help that neighbor sort of answer your question. Have to talk to the neighbors. Yes, the neighbor on the other side, Dick Bailey, those are apartments and. We haven't had an issue there. I mean, like many public hearings, you know, citizens come out, you know, we don't want this. We haven't had any of that at all. I think it's going to really be a benefit for the neighbor. Short question.
So the only concern I have, or maybe it's more of a question, is um. The six parking spaces that are out front. Are. There's there's a large vehicle there. It's going to make Grand Street too much narrow. And I'm. I I I well, the the way the way to gain space would be to push the sidewalk back a little bit. I realize it winds up now, but it's very open now. We don't have. Oh, that's just my thought.
John, what's what's the line for the parking spots? I don't have the information.
It says eighteen feet here.
And you would prefer twenty, nineteen?
Yeah, twenty would give me would make me feel better.
What if it was posted small car parking only?
That's another option.
Which we see a lot. There's parking.
I I don't mind the parking. I appreciate the parking there. I mean, we need that.
But that's the grand street plan that that we have currently from each other. And see and knows that that's the direction. That's why it's. It makes the there also will be at the curve the two foot over.
The the dimension, I guess I don't. How 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 much? How far is it from the sidewalk to the right away? Sidewalk is seven feet. Looks like maybe ten feet, am I guessing? I'm I'm looking at page three of nineteen, but I don't know. Maybe that's not a. It's on a different page and I just not looking at it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, if that could be shortened up somehow a little bit and we gain a couple, three feet or wherever, I would feel more comfortable with that.
We we gain a jakey sidewalk through that.
Well, you correct it in the future.
So you want the.
We have, we have, I like your word. We have jakey sidewalks in a lot of places as a result of our. Our flex- as a result of our flexibility to not put it at the top of your line. Okay, so I mean, just because it.
The sidewalk south is actually a little bit further off the road. Cheek.
I just think it makes, I mean, that's going to become a very busy corridor. People going to the park, the more people that get on Grand View. With this development, if we ever get something down thirty-fourth side of broad. Ideally, perpendicular parking is not the most desirable on a narrow street. A lot of.
If you have a twenty-foot walk, you have or a twenty-foot deep stall, you then can reduce the sidewalk to five feet. And stone. The only reason that the sidewalk is seven feet is because the stall is a complete weakness for our ordinance. You have to get that over.
I mean, could you could you shift the sidewalk two feet to?
We could. I don't know if it's necessary.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Sean. Signing the response. That's more than other signposts.
I still think you want the space. I mean, I.
I get that. I'm just saying that.
Two cars passing by are going to be right up against the bumper.
I understand that. I'm just saying that to label it, I don't think is the best solution because that is more silent. Can we try to avoid that?
That's the only, that's the only thing I.
Okay.
That's that is today.
I like the I like the detention. I like the infiltration. I like the rain gardens. I like the additional sanitary manhole. Utilities of access. Zach, go ahead.
Okay. Would it be correct to say that the deceleration lane is there only to support the postbox? Okay, if the postbox weren't there, there wouldn't have the deceleration. All right, um. Do you mean, I know there's still influx, will the user side of the mailbox be facing the street or the sidewalk?
User side.
Where I define key and get the block. Okay, I would it be safe to presume there'll be additional sidewalk added there? There's a gap now.
Right, we have been. That that out because we don't have a dependent location for the post office. Yeah, but yes, there would be the sidewalk.
Leading up to the.
Leading up to the hatchet.
On the um, I wasn't able to tell from the renderings or the. Elevations, is there any physical screening between the parking? The the ground for parking and apartments to the north, or is it just landscape? Is there any physical screen? Towards the apartments in the parking.
In the.
Underneath the parking.
Both sides. They're over here, right?
The Mill Creek side, yeah.
Yeah, Mill Creek side, yeah, 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 thank you.
That the first floor of the.
He's asking when the cars pull into the space, what's what's on the backside of the of the spaces? Is it wide open or is or is it landscaping or is it? Is there a small fence or a room or lights going to shine right on the back? What's going to? Yeah, call it if the true if north is straight up, then the northwest side of the building or the parking, the parking side.
Yeah, and. Render is here, it's kind of shadows, but there's kind of a series of walls here and then on the backside facing the apartments to the northwest or the the series of walls there. It's not completely closed off, but it's kind of.
How high is the wall?
About headlight level? It's kind of a broken wall, so it's not like it's closed off. But you're saying. Because it was landscaping, it's going to take a while for it to fill in and there'll be holes in samples.
Well, or a combination of that. Or whatever, right?
Um I just. It's here and then.
I mean, thi- this is this is what he's asking about over here.
Yeah.
I I I think these are the part on Grand Street that the parts that I'm talking about, reading a little bit for that one. That's what.
Yeah.
I think is what you're asking about.
Yeah. So one question I'll put put to you while I ask my next is, it would be possible to have three-foot wall unbroken along there? Again, thoughts are, they are apartments, but I don't. Like to have folks living there having headlights pop poking in. Probably are sad or before they go in.
Does that question make sense to you, Jack? What we're asking?
Yes.
Don't need an answer. I have some more. The spec sheets for the lighting has a pretty, pretty broad range for the color temperature. Would you be comfortable with limiting that to a maximum of thirty-four hundred Kelvin? That's at the top end of the soft white. And I ask that because if it's a bright, bright white, higher than that, it gets a bit intense.
I think the way that discussed and what you see is what was redefined with the.
Yeah, well.
What's your what's your read of it? Of of how many gallons? I'm seeing there's the the product features at twenty-seven hundred, three thousand, thirty-five hundred or four thousand color temperature.
Yeah, four thousand is is pretty white.
Is the one you you're saying. Okay, so either the the three lower units or what?
Yeah. So I offer that as a additional condition. And I've mentioned this a lot. Uh my apologies for everyone mentioning again, no rooftop deck for this fellow, right? If if they wanted to add one, would they have to come back to amend this?
Yes.
That would be a major amendment?
Uh yes.
Okay.
Because it's a more use. It's more use and it wasn't counted. It doesn't mean that it wouldn't be welcome. It's just.
Great cities have patio decks uh or rooftop decks and. To advise that it would be contrary to the scope of what has been forwarded to us, the planning commission to approve it with them allowing rooftop deck at this time.
I'm sorry to say the last part of natural.
So. As part of the approving body, we can say we approve this and you can put a rooftop deck. My understanding from what you've said is that that would be outside the scope of what the planning commission recommended to us and what was noticed and considered public area.
Right. If that's what council wanted to do, it would, my suggestion would be to send it back to planning commission to. Discuss and bring it back to you with the appropriate language, whether that's in the development agreement, allocation, site plan, et cetera, so that you didn't. Have to necessarily go through site plan review and order the activity.
All right, uh I won't make them do that. They've had plenty of measures with fire code, um but I do want to bring it into discussion that I think it's an important part of of urban life that we're building down there.
Right, and I think if I remember right, Zach, you had mentioned that it might have been even as far back as the pre.
I'm all question that.
So so you asked the, so what what is the um you asked about the lumens? So what what is the color temperature that you're proposing for the which one you want of the the part of the walls or or?
The all of them.
All of them, you know?
The the lower three. Thirty-five.
Do you have?
This is all been discussed. Colonel Warman.
So.
Sorry.
So the lighting. That you went down to class has a range. And what Zach is asking for is he wants it all over.
It's not not brightness, but the color of the light. So it'd be soft white as opposed to the bright blue middle of the day.
That's all.
It's an.
So it can't exceed the thirty-five hundred?
Okay.
That's 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 not changing. That's a simple one. It's just.
Yeah.
It's just refining. So let me make sure I've got all this. Clear uh in my notes. In addition to the. Um conditions that are listed here and we can pull out the development agreement for just a second. You want. A twenty-foot wide. Improved parking stall on Grand Street. You still want the sidewalk seven feet wide, which means it's going to be slightly joined a little bit, right?
That's what I was proposing.
Okay. Let me ask this. If it does a twen- if they do a twenty. My question is irrelevant. That's funny. So we've got that. You want this, want to make sure that there's a sidewalk for the post office box. And a half wall on the west side of the. Below building parking to stream in addition to the landscaping that's there. Okay, the only caveat I want to add to that is that they, the design that they had is worked out with staff.
Full height.
No, it's just a, yeah, three foot, right?
So the Colonel Warman letter says a fixture type B needs to be shown on the plan. And then and notes that they, I see A and C. Is there somewhere that it talks about that B?
No, that's why they want it to be shown on the plan. It hasn't been shown. It's a proposed, but it's not shown.
It's proposed on the plan and called out. That's what they call out is. Little site plan questions?
I guess.
Zach?
Will moving the sidewalk back two feet affect the landscaping in the area between the sidewalk?
I didn't see. Um. Not a lot because that area.
No, there's work proposed.
No, it doesn't change the trees. You can still get trees in there because that is.
I think we can still get it in there. I I would ask you guys the question. Because I I really like the sidewalks. But I totally get your point about the death of the sidewalk. Get a big long, extra long truck in there. It's got a hitch on it and sticking out the street. So I I totally get that. Um. What I'm wondering is if we could go twenty-foot spaces, five-foot walk and put bumper blocks. To keep people from pulling out and having them overhang on the sidewalk. That would get you two two extra feet. See, we have a five-foot wide, the twenty-foot space and put the bone lock at eighteen feet. That would let us keep the sidewalk.
But that's the same as eighteen and seven, right? Because you just, right now, you've got a you've got a design so you can crawl all the way up, right?
Yeah.
It's the same thing. That's why you need to you need the extra.
Yes, that's going to be gross area.
That that's why I'm, that's why we got to give them room with the plows. I mean. I think if it was angled parking, you'd be a little further off. If it was parallel, I wouldn't have any problem. It's be further off, but perpendicular makes it tough.
I think if you were closely at the planet action, we'll still lie because right now you. Have that two feet and just be when there is a beautiful overhang, you have that extra. By walking around the table of the sidewalk itself, still that must really would have been so long. You just move through the, you go from a twelve-foot green space area down to ten. That's still.
Yeah, we're still going to have to put a jack. I mean, this is parking over here too. It's just.
I mean, I mean, the jogs are not uncommon. I mean, if you look at the top of the screen on page nine, there's a jog coming around the pole anyway. Jogs all over. It's like jogging is going to be.
So to, to answer the question, we can still.
And I'm going to throw out a bit of urban design. So you know how we're trying to make our spaces slower traffic, less through traffic, more pedestrian friendly? It's hard for me to imagine a lot of people with extended cabs parking there with their things to get three feet out in the road because they know there's going to be someone doing this who's going to take off from back of their truck. And even if they were, that it's going to slow traffic, which is good for this. Now I speak to this for experience. This town I grew up in, Shepherd, Michigan. Was this traditional main road intersects with the railroad and there's all the debris there. We had angle parking that was just big enough to fit regular cars. And if you brought your farm truck in, you were sticking out and these were just twelve foot lanes. And you had to slow down and you had to wait for people from the other side. We had some fancy pants engineers come in from a consultancy and they said, you need to make your parking spaces at least two feet deeper. So when the folks have the extended cabs, you're not going to slow down traffic at all. And it cut off the sidewalks that used to be gracious. And now you can't ride your bike comfortably out there when there were people walking. You can't sit out with tables. Two feet is a lot for the pedestrian. That's all I'm going to say.
So what are you saying? And I'm not proposing a, a less narrow sidewalk than anybody else has.
Slower traffic is more pleasant for pedestrians. The butt of the cars are closer to the road. Traffic is naturally going to go slower.
Well, I know, but that's if people are walking in the street. They're on the sidewalk, but the, that's intended that.
Would you rather walk twenty feet from forty mile traffic or twenty mile ground traffic?
Zach, I'm just acknowledging the reality that there's a lot of cars on here and adding a little more space to the. I, I mean, I, I really don't think we should be having perpendicular parking.
The biggest issue perpendicular parking on streets is they ought to be wider because people don't have the radius to full turn it. So instead of nine feet, they should probably ten or eleven.
Yeah, that's true too. I'm okay with one less space there too, if you want to do that.
Did planning commission have anything to say about this? Or I'm curious to know if there was, did this come up with planning commission for particular parking and?
A, a, and the, the. Cars hanging up there. Was there a preference in planning to, to do angle or? They did the perpendicular because of existing conditions and the way the plan is for Green Street, the concept sidewalk.
I mean, we've got a ninety-nine foot right away. So we want to make everything so compact. We've got the blessing of a ninety-nine foot right away. And we want to jam everything together and I don't get it. Doesn't make any sense.
I can see things coming on both sides, so.
Can we, can we give direction to staff and the applicant to maybe come up with a, spend a little more time with a creative solution?
Let me ask this. As opposed to the perpendicular parking. Would you rather have on street? Parallel, yeah, parallel like it is across the street. And would you guys ever take that back to the planning commission? Get their feedback on it because when it does is it reduces parking further. And that stays in line with your process.
Those six spaces aren't counted in the applicant's parking that they're providing. They're just bonus spaces, right? I mean, I mean, you're not, you're not losing any spaces because they're not there now.
I'd have to go back to look specifically, but I thought. They got, yes, thinking it is the visitor parking that they count toward. And because it was a P D. It was expected that it was improved in front of brand for all of the visitor parking.
So the apartments. Towards.
Yes.
So this is my, it's going to be the source of, speaking out among barrel park is consistent.
For reference, the base F one fifty that you divide a day is seventeen point four feet from tip to tail. You take two feet off from the wheel to the front. So if you pull all the way up to the, the curb, there's fifteen feet behind you.
Yeah, the basement.
Yeah, if you get the extended cabin a full bed, then it's a full twenty. Minus the two feet from the wheel.
But you do, but to Sean's point, you do see that this is something that you see as you go down Alpine Street and it is also something you see on Central Street. It does to Zach's point, slow down traffic. I can't address if we've had any kind of accidents or anything.
Well, if, if folks butts are sticking out of their parking space, that's violation of motor vehicle code. They're obstructing the flow of traffic in a behavioral lane. They should get a ticket for it. Every, every now and then, Central will be a delivery band that's sticking three feet on the sidewalk, three feet in the road. That's, that's the violation. It's still like parking in front of some drive.
Well, it's up to you guys. I, I was just proposing a slight change to that to give a little more room. Anything else I was, I wasn't good with.
I'm not opposed to Justin's suggestion to let people take, get a chance to get away from council and sit down and try to work on it.
Are you minimal to that? Are you minimal to try to come back to us a better graphic? Based upon what you've heard or would, would you rather we tried to take some type of action on this?
Yes.
I don't think we're asking to change the angle partner.
I mean, I, I think we're agreeable. So that we can make that new, so. You. Yourselves can give us some direction if you want to stay eighteen feet or something.
Does anybody know the depth of the parking spaces at?
Eighteen feet.
Next to the ones that are next to it, the existing apartment complex, just.
There are little ones. So in grass and people kind of.
I just know that there's a five foot sidewalk over there. And people back up and you're onto the sidewalk.
That's why I think it needs more discussion.
I think to that point too, as this continue, it's less important lining up where the sidewalk, the north or the west where it is now versus where we're moving that approach. Just to be approved with curve out. So whatever decision made here, we'd like to.
Right, be reflective. So if we want, if we want it wider now, we should do it now and supposedly later. Danny, you made the motion.
I did.
Your second was it.
I'm with the motion too.
We've got, we've had Zach's suggestion to have less than thirty-five hundred or thirty-four hundred Kelvin. One of those units are right, the third, those three color. And my suggestion of the twenty foot sidewalk with the, or twenty foot parking with the seven foot sidewalk. So essentially it's going to move back. Two feet.
Well, I, I'm thinking what Marcus is saying that we get it right this time because that has a. A lot to do with what we do in the future. And if there is. By two weeks, another two weeks, we might be able to.
So you, you prefer to have them just redraw it? As opposed to just stating it and voting on it?
If that's, if they're just going to redraw the one you taught us and said, no, I don't think that's necessary. I, I just, if that isn't the, if that isn't the solution, if somebody went to talk. Like the justice has suggested that you look at it, come up with a, a more creative solution. If there's going to be another solution. I don't know.
I would be fine supporting it with the two friendly methods. If you accept.
Yeah, we're talking about conditions right now. We're talking about conditions to the motion, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so I would be fine supporting that. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to stall this for that. I don't need that to do anything else.
That's how I am. And I think the six places are fine. The planning commission approved the six spaces. Do you, okay, so you guys are okay with those two motions, two, two conditions?
And, and I think Zach had a, had a suggestion of a, a half wall.
Yes, and the third was the half wall.
Right. Subject to approval.
Okay, so do you understand the three things we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, whatever would give some screening from the head, the normal headlights is those, is wherever that height you see.
So the screen wall on the west side. Change of spaces, twenty feet for the seven foot wide. The lighting levels and then making sure we have sidewalks in the post office. Those were the important things.
Yep, that's right. Okay, any further discussion on the site plan?
So I guess, I guess it's a question for Marcus. I'm not sure. So is the thinking that you're trying, we're talking about continual improvements. It's the thinking that we would then expect this, we would be moving the sidewalk everywhere. That you like two more feet in? Is that what you were suggesting in your, by your comment?
Well.
Yes.
When, when there's improvements on the road to the north or the west. And at some point in the future where it gets curved, you would just follow the curve. So you wouldn't really be moving. I mean, yeah, I guess they could move a footer too, but that what's there, we have to come out and put this curve road cross actually where it's currently.
Isn't there a telephone pole right on the back of the sidewalk property line?
There's a telephone pole in the.
There's one in the island. You just pull the sidewalk further away from it.
Okay, then they move the poles closer to the road and then replace them then?
Yeah, actually they did. It was like, well, somewhere off to the side, Zach, but yeah. None of them are in the sidewalk. Okay, Pam, please call the vote. Those, those are the four conditions then.
Well, you actually, you have, you'll have twelve conditions overall.
Oh, sorry, four additional.
You've got the eight that are in there, but we haven't talked about the development agreement.
Right, we're handling the site plan at this time.
Okay, so you want to handle that separate?
Yes.
Alright. So. It's the conditions of approval that are in my letter, less number four, Pam, and then those four additional that we talked about.
What page are you on?
Page one thirty-one of the packet. Is there anybody online that has a question to come?
Is there anybody online that has a question? I don't think so, but if so. Please raise your hand so we can see a question. Okay, so the, the motion to approve the final site, the P U D site, the final P U D, or P U D final site plan. With the, with conditions one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight plus the four that we talked about.
Right.
Okay, Pam, please call the vote.
Griffin, yes, present.
Yes.
Shells.
No.
Arra.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes. Okay, motion carries five to one. Okay, so that leaves the development agreement, which is in. You want to give us enough, I don't know where everybody's at.
So. In the packet, you've got two documents. The document. The first P U D you see in your packet is the one that have the markups from the developer's attorney. As you can see, they are minor. Our city attorney. Yes, Sean, one fifty-one.
One fifty-one, right, okay. So that's got the markup from.
From.
Their, their, yeah, okay. And then there's one at the end.
And then there's one at the end. The one at the end are the ones that Scott has responded to the applicants. He made again some minor changes. He did not accept one of the, very, one specific one. And it's at the very, very end. You see a lot of little things that he did, but it was one at the very, very end regarding. Number twenty, the applicant's attorney, you'll see it on a. So that you've got the comparison. I'm sorry. Number twenty-four, page one sixty-two. And on page. Two eleven, you'll see our attorney struck it out. And that's because the applicant's attorney. Wanted this agreement, this P U D agreement to end, the way he wrote it, wrote it was to terminate the agreement when the project's done. The difficulty is so P U D agreement becomes the only one that's for the directive. And so you don't, you don't terminate it at the end. And I know that Sean, Sean, Scott has had a conversation or was going to try and have a conversation with the applicant's attorney. And that's why he struck that out. All of the other comments are all minor and not substantive. They're in the grammar. There are small tweaks, but they're not substantive. I'm comfortable if you recommend approval with staff and the city attorney finalizing it. But if you wanted to come back to you to see that final, that would be this, that would be similar to what we did with Hilltop.
Well, I'm having more for two weeks to come back, very well.
I move approval, contingent upon approval. Of amendments by city staff and city attorney.
Okay, motion by Michelle.
I'm sorry, Zach, I dropped.
That's what you said.
That's what I said. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve it like you, it's not working out as well, I'm saying, right? That's my repeat of the motion. Okay.
And who was the second? I'm sorry.
Uh, Sinan.
Thank you. Please be aware that if for some reason anything substance comes up after you approve it, I do bring it back to you.
You'll come back. Yeah, if it gets caught between this, just come back.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on the? Development agreement? Yeah, if you call the vote, please to approve the development agreement.
Fisher?
Yes.
Arra?
Yes.
Shells?
Yes.
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you to the Kamala Harper team. We look forward to seeing this grow. We're looking forward to seeing this grow. Good night. Okay, council comments this evening. Alex will give you the first go.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, I have this night.
Uh, I really hope we can get to our next fire station work session. I was hoping that we're going to have it last Saturday, but I understand it's important to do that, so. I'm looking forward to April ninth or whatever the end is.
But you can't make a couple of weeks, right?
The Wednesday nights are tougher.
Yeah. When I was on there, I remember it was open on the nights. Okay, Zach?
Uh, for team Mahoffer Campbell, once you know, I'm very excited about this project. I voted no about it because I'm very for sticking about urban design stuff. But I really am excited for this and it fills a missing gap of housing in the city. So thank you for your efforts and your patience with the process. And for council, again, thank you for my patience on those details. I literally have books and books about cross section of streets in different cities. Uh, if anyone wants the cross section of the shops, I would say I have that for you. If you want, uh, Sienna in Italy, I have that as well in my books. So it's it's one of my touchstones and it's very important because as as Churchill pointed out, you shape your environment and then your environment shapes you. And the street design, once that's laid down, that's there for decades and decades and decades. Once those curves are set, everyone's not moving until the curves are destroyed in a hundred years. What for? Thank you. I'm also.
Okay.
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cousins?
Um, just want to say, not really a most part of the report, but I really enjoyed going to Howard. Having a conversation. I had quite a role in which we self was Roland's first really outing of that kind of thing, but I appreciated the conversation.
Okay, we're down to not arrange participation. Any comments? Why don't you unmute everybody? Josh, anyone online want to say anything this evening? I don't see any hands up, so. Okay. I don't see the motion for a German at eighty two, moved by Fisher.
Yeah.
Second by Jamie, all in favor? Have a good evening, everyone.